I appreciate you all being here. It is six o'clock on the fifteenth of August, and so we'll go ahead with the meeting. I've asked the -- I've pledged to do the pledge, but before that happens, I'll take care of the prayer. Our Father in heaven, as we come before this time, we are so very thankful for the country that we live in, for the freedoms that we have. Thankful for the state and the city that we live in, the ability that we have to govern ourselves. As representatives of this city, Father, we ask thee to guide us in those things that that would be -- have us do for the betterment of our community and its residents. We say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I am a dutch legion two to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a third being justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Come on in, Doug. We're waiting till they get up here to go through the consent agenda. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and move on to the to be consent agenda, approval of minutes for the regular meeting of August first, 2018. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to move, now we approve the consent agenda.
So, second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to C, petitions, will the public forum, anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Time limit is three minutes, less if you can, and we'll go to that point. Okay, doesn't appear we have anybody who want to take advantage of the public forum. So we'll move on to number two, staff reports and council reports. Anybody from staff would like to come up and speak with us.
Mayor, Council, just a quick couple updates. We got a lot of water leaks that they're fixing all over. There's a few on Main Street, just all over the place, so we're trying to get those under control. And we haven't had any, you know, big blow up once since, or at least about a month, but we're just getting those. We're replacing some sidewalks, cross cutters and everything that, you know, on some projects that we've got going on, just trip hazards and stuff throughout the city, and then trying to get back up to the RV park so we can get moving on that. But this is our busy time, trying to squeeze it in before October, so those are a couple quick updates. If you have any questions.
Can you give us a water update and a well pump update?
I can, you don't know. We've ordered the pump for the well. It's gonna be about, I think, eighty-three thousand total between getting it out, cambering it. So we had it cambered to make sure that the screen didn't get damaged, because it, you know, there was evidence that they'd been sitting right on the screen, and that came up negative, so that was good news, because that would've been another twenty to forty thousand dollars to fix that. But, so it's on order, we're hoping another week or two and that'll be in, and then they'll get it back installed. The lakes are pretty empty, I mean, the Big East has still got some water in it, but there's not a lot up there left, so we're trying to make that last, but it is what it is. We don't have any other source to water the golf course without it, so. We're getting by, but, you know, we're doing okay in the city where the ponds are okay, so it's just trying to get that pump back in, so.
So did we find out what was wrong with the pump?
There was sand, so it destroyed, it completely destroyed the pump. I mean, they figured, estimate, they figured we put two hundred pounds of brass up through the sprinkler system, so.
So is there a way to mitigate that, does no one put in?
We're trying to. We're gonna move the pump down sixty feet so it didn't between the screens, not right in the screen where it was. And then we're putting stainless steel impellers in, and then rubber, it's not, I forget what they're called, but just some rubber, so it's supposed to be a little bit more wire resistant, but nothing's good with sand. So hopefully that'll mitigate some, but we'll see, so let them go from there, so. Yeah, it's not very good.
Thank you.
I don't have much reporting to say. I appreciate the attendance for the National Night Out last week was very good. We had a good turnout. They served about two thousand tacos and four hundred and something hot dogs, so we had a few people, I'm sure they had extras, but that's okay. And as you know, we had a plane crash over the weekend, and you guys have all seen that on the news, so unfortunate situation, and we appreciate the support from, we've had a few of you guys reach out to us and do that, so I appreciate our officers and our first responders, our fire department, they've done a fantastic job from what I'm told. I was fortunate enough to be gone when it happened, so, but anyway, so thank the Public Works partner too, who helped us tour of Utah, get the street signs and stuff like that out, so we've been crazy busy the last few weeks, and we appreciate their help, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, in public, we wanted to give a little update on our Memorial Park pickleball courts. Last week we reviewed the applicants, and then this week we chose to interview three of them, and that was today. And after those interviews, we've decided to work Design West and Tennis and Track Company the project, so we'll be getting with them next week to begin the final design, pass the conceptual designs that we have, and get into the design and architecture of that so they can get it going. And they would like to start this fall as quick as they can on that, so it seems like things will move forward here soon. We're excited about that.
What was the bid coming in on?
Well, again, this was a design bid project, so we gave them the budget, and then they came back with what the possibilities are with that budget, and we kept some of that, we kept some money with contingency as well from that.
Do we give them all of what we want?
Yeah, I think so. They had two different options, but they're a little more than what we advertised for, but I think we can get it within what we had budgeted. Yep, that's the plan, I mean, there's, and, yeah, there's obviously cost increased continually too, but some of the things they talked about weren't in the initial concepts as well, some improvements to the park for different things, so we'll see where we get or where we land.
Since Carl brought that up, maybe I could just throw it out, but you saw the design we put out for the bid that has six pickleball courts and two basketball courts. We discussed a little bit today, because it seems like everybody's doing pickleball courts. Spanish Fork's doing sixteen of them, Linden just did some, but I guess the question that came up, we could do three additional pickleball courts, make nine, and not do the basketball courts. It probably would make the cost go up because of fencing, but something to throw out, I don't know if you have any opinion on that, or if you want to think about it. It seems like Heber City took out some basketball courts and converted them to pickleball courts. It seems like that's kind of the range now, whether that continues to be the range, but...
I just happened to come by while they was talking about them, and that was one of my suggestions, that maybe we ought to have a look at doing a few more pickleball courses since so far there are other places to play basketball inside and outside, especially where we've got an agreement with the school district to be able to play on some of their ground, so that was just something I threw in the mix.
Something to think about?
I just wanted to report, first of all, thank the public safety, fire and ambulance. I did get a call at three thirty, and it was interesting that neither chief was in town. And it made things go really smooth. No, everybody filled in, and they did a great job. It's just an unfortunate event, but the professionalism of the police, public safety and the fire, they did a good job, so.
I'd like to echo that as well.
The thing I wanted to bring up is we have our next celebration coming up in a couple of weeks, week and a half. How do you want to deal with the parade? Do you guys want to have separate golf carts? Do you want to have separate trucks? Do you want to ride together?
If we have separate golf carts, then we can push bread off the road?
You might be able to, but you have to get out, you have to get out of the golf cart to pass candy out. No throwing from vehicles.
You can have people walk.
In fact, we can get, I can drive for one of you, and you guys can walk along and pass out candy. No, I just wanted to know how you wanted to deal with it, so we can make arrangements. Janine, have you already made arrangements, and I'm going over your head?
No, 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 that's what I wanted to say, I wanted to ask.
Our mayor's definitely a cowboy. I like, it's not an election here, I like riding altogether, I think it's good. You want to ride altogether? I think it's good.
Or just walk.
Or walk together, I just think it's good to be seated. I usually get up, because I can't throw candy from the vehicle, so I usually end up walking off. Yeah, so you could all walk along and then sit on the tailgate, I guess, if you wanted to.
So if I need to see the officers, then I throw candy at them.
Just let us know, I mean, that's good feedback. I went to a few parades, and I think the two that I went to, they had golf carts for each one of them, but we can get a truck, we can get a, we can try to find whatever, can't we, Janine?
Sure.
She pulls out a lot of magic. Okay, that's all I have to pull up.
Thank you, Doug. You didn't know that?
What did he say?
You missed, you'll have to check the minutes. I said, does that mean we're supposed to be in the parade?
Mayor and Council, so I'm just gonna move right into that, you really cannot throw candy from your moving vehicle, seriously, because you are the precedence, you're going first, so if you guys start doing that, then my whole parade does. And I signed papers through UDOT that I have promised that no one will do that, so it's like a law, so I will kick you right out of the parade if you throw candy.
Can we ride last, so we don't ruin the precedence?
Yeah, after everybody goes, I'm gonna go and throw all the candy away.
We got some of those bird scooters from Salt Lake. We throw them from those.
If I have a golf cart and I have one foot on the ground, pedaling along, does that count?
Yeah, so even, you can't even like walk close to it, because the idea is to, you know. We don't want anyone to get hurt. So I just wanted to thank you for your support for the salmon supper. I think the time ticket was positive, I think there was a lot of, and they were not sure if I was gonna, that's why I told everyone we have to do it right this first year, we can't lean and make, you know, I even had a gentleman who came at seven thirty, and he glared at me from five PM to seven thirty, because I would, he was gonna miss his work, but he couldn't, he didn't buy a ticket till seven thirty, and I says, and then he was like, "They're gonna fire me." And I says, "That's not me, sir, that is still your choice, not mine," because they're gonna fire you. Anyway, so it was just, it was so great to set some rules that I know will work for us, and then the families all around the world can work around our rules, instead of me trying to help all these families come to the salmon supper. Anyway, it just was a much better salmon supper for me, so I hope also it was better for everyone. I think the longest wait time was thirty minutes, a lot of people got there in ten, fifteen minutes, so it was pretty fun, it was good. Also, thank you for your support with the Tour of Utah, that was my first one, so I appreciate, I thought it was fun, it was kind of Hollywoodish, and it was, I thought it was great. My volunteers at the Petite Me that day on Wednesday, we had a meeting this morning, and that's all they could talk about, they just thought that was just amazing. They had, when I told them about it, and that we're trying to, you know, the Petite Me was one of the things we wanted to showcase, I mean, they just, I don't think they really paid attention, but that day they were like, it was pretty amazing, so. And then a lot of the news people came over and went for tours through the museum after, so it was really good, it was fun. So we have...
Did they get any of those audio books to listen to as they went up the canyon?
I'm not sure, I'm sure on the head. We have Coco that will be playing in the park, Petite Me, not park, memorial, sorry, that guy, the Petite Me camp theater, Coco will be playing Friday night, and that, put on by The Chambers, so, and I wanted to thank Chief Bishop too for National Night Out, it was, I thought it was so much fun, and he had a huge crowd, so he did a great job with that, so that was fun. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Janine.
Oh, and I knew you were gonna say, that's one more.
Is it over?
Yes, well, mine for the year.
That should've been for a while.
Mayor, Council, Public, I just wanted to add to the pickleball thing, our grant that we got for the library for community recreation kits, we're almost ready to start checking those out, we've got paddle boards and kayaks, and we also bought four sets of two pickleballs with three balls, so people that don't have pickleball rockets and want to try it can come check them out at the library, if that's okay. The next summer reading was a, I feel like, very successful year, we had about twelve hundred people involved of all different ages. We had, we've got really good stats this year, because we did it all online, like Janine, gone online, it's really nice, because we can see everything laid out, and so we had a lot of positive response on that, and we're gonna launch a winter reading program this year too, so, thanks.
Any other staff members like to come up? Okay, then we'll throw it over to Council. Councilwoman, aye?
I just want to thank Janine again, because I had never been to a Tour of Utah, and that was, that was just great. I mean, I totally enjoyed that, just watching them and their race, it was, I don't know how to even explain it, but thank you for everything you do, I mean, and the salmon supper, I wasn't there, but my sister took my place, and she said that it was just awesome, that doing it the way you did it, the people were all talking to her and telling her how thankful they were, that they didn't have to wait in line for three hours, so you got a winner there. And thank you to the police department for showing up to that. I'm sorry you weren't there, Brad, you missed great excitement, I'm sorry, it's bad excitement, but, but yeah, thank you for the people that showed up and took care of that, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, it's been an amazing couple of weeks for Payson City, some of it not amazing in good ways, but most of it absolutely incredible. The volunteer work that the citizens of Payson put in to help out Janine, and to help out, you know, the taco truck guy, I don't know if you guys know this, but he donated all of those tacos. He didn't accept any payment, and I think that's pretty neat, and I like to talk about it, people who look out for our community, I'm gonna give them a plug, and so if you ever get a handprint for tacos, go down to the best taco truck down by Arnie B's. But yeah, big thanks to Janine and Streets, Public Works, everybody, it's really been a good, a good week. Also, if you didn't see it, Payson was on the news for Something Good, the Payson City Band, there's a little clip done by Channel Five, it's about a ten minute, five, ten minute clip, on the Payson City Band, I guess we've been doing for a hundred and nine, eight? Hundred sixteen years, that's the comp, is that right? Hundred sixteen years, longer than Smores, that's all that I remembered, so that was pretty impressive. One thing I just want to talk about, and this, I don't know if there's a right forum to do this, and it doesn't look like, this may not get out to anybody else, without, I only know what was put on the news about the tragic incidents with the airplane, I do know that there was an element somewhere, whether it was related or not, I'm not making any statements that way, but there was an element of domestic violence involved, and I made a call, I had to make a call to Officer Riley, had a question to ask him yesterday, and he was out on a call on domestic violence, and there's too much of that in our community. We need to do something to take care of it, whether it's being just nicer neighbors, if that's all we can do, if it's not happening in our houses, look out for each other, smile, help give them a reason to like themselves better, or their situation, but there's too much domestic violence in our community, and I don't know what to do, but I encourage people to look at, make sure that that's not happening in their houses, and if it's happening to you, to be strong enough to walk away from it. Sorry?
I appreciate your comments on it. Just like to stress that I do agree with what Councilman Welton says, but would also would like to express that it's not only a Payson problem, it's a problem that's statewide and countrywide, so, but I do support what you just said. If I could, just real quickly, just agree with what's been said about the tour and the salmon supper, I've got a letter that I would like to read, just a short segment of, because I think it's important, says, "Dear Mayor, write, this is from Rich and Leanne Bowman. They wanted to take care of their Payson Patriot Camp at the Payson Memorial Park, and they ran into some problems because of scheduling on their side and our side, and finally they were able to reach a good date for them to do this, and they wanted to reach out and compliment in general the Payson City employees, but they highlighted two of them. This is what they said in part, "We wanted to recognize Debbie Bushnell and Blair," sorry, don't have his last name, which is Blair and Raisin, "and the city employees have also attended the park during this very busy week. Debbie and Blair and a whole host of other city employees were so helpful, we ran our camp in the park during this week. Whenever we had questions or problems, setting up particular things in the park, location, electric plugs, temporary barring traffic cones, unlocking the bathrooms, et cetera, these folks were just so quick to help and remanding them. As a side note, the bathrooms are very clean." You know, it's a pleasure to be able to get a letter like this from someone in our community or surrounding community, and I just wanted to give a shout out to the city employees, so, thank you.
I have just a few things here, one is on the salmon supper, Janine Knight, they had lots of feedback, and they, everybody, I didn't have one person say they didn't like the new system, so, I think it was a great idea, and I think it worked really well, so thank you on that. And I'm really sad I missed Tour of Utah, I've been to the other two, and I missed this one, and especially with the start-finish here, I was really sad to miss that, but. Another thing in the news, we're getting some good press in Payson, there's a, I think it's in the Daily Herald, they talk about the events in Utah County, they went through eight events, I think, that have been over sixty years, and two of them were Payson, one was Onion Days, the other was Salmon Supper, and we could go on, we could already put the band in the park and PCT with that also, but anyway, two of the eight events were in Payson here. And then the last thing, going back to what Doug said about volunteers, I mentioned this a few times before, but I really think we ought to have some night for volunteers, and just give, invite them, and give them a pat on the back, and thank them, but have a night where we bring them in, everybody we know that's a volunteer during the year, and do something for our volunteers, because we have great volunteers, and it's, it's community what makes the community go, so.
Oh, there has been a lot going on in the last two weeks, I'm not gonna, I thoroughly enjoyed the salmon supper, and I did, I didn't ever see that hostility, the year before I had helped serve as well, and people were frustrated, I've been in line forever, and they get right up to you, then they have to sit and wait for their salmon, and it, it was nice, it flowed a lot better, so kudos to you. Also, thanks to the park, I know that they don't necessarily love that kind of stuff, they put in a lot of hours, the day of, the day after, and everything. I did notice that they probably are due for some new shirts, let's get some new bright, vibrant shirts on our park workers so we can tell who they are. Just kind of noticing that, spent quite a bit of time with them. The Tour of Utah, I'm not going to lie, I showed up there with no more than the intent to stay about twenty minutes, make a presence, tell myself, hey, look, I did my civic duty, I'm out of here. I couldn't leave, I had to wait till the bitter end, watching that race, and I loved our commercial, I don't know if anybody got the opportunity to see the commercial?
Yeah, I meant to give a shout out to that.
Yeah, you missed it, I got that one all to myself. It was awesome, I was really fun to see it there, and they showed it three or four times right there on the live television, and I think we need to get that out there a little bit more, showing it off. Everything looking good, I was, I didn't hear a lot of complaints about the city being shut down for that bike race, I think they did a good job of blocking the roads when they needed to, and then opening them back up pretty quick and kept things flowing. I did have one issue with the roads there, I know that Mount Ebow, the custodian tells me, he calls them once a week to complain about the potholes, and school starts next week, if we could get somebody there to look at them, it's like a foot by three inch deep trench right in front of all their openings is opened up, at Mount Ebow. Yeah, so if we could get over there and look at that, yeah, I don't want to drive my truck through every day.
You might try and make a real, a quick check of all the schools before school starts, I think that's probably the major one, but wouldn't hurt to...
Yeah, I don't, I don't bet on any of the others, but it wouldn't hurt, those entrances get a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic this time of year, so, you know, that's all, keep up the good work, thanks.
Okay, moving right along, I don't believe number three, we have any scout in attendance? I don't see anyone, don't have any names that were submitted, so we'll move on from that. So we'll go on to the action items, public carrying and vacation of Green Ridge Landing Flat A, lots ten and eleven, and creating Green Ridge Landing Flat B, lots one and two, with an amended boundary and public utility easements. So Daniel, you're up.
Okay. Well, that's about it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a very simple one, it's just, so locate a map, ten sixty-nine south, Green Ridge Ave, and then the lots in south, it's like ten eighty-five south. Obviously you see Green Ridge right there, single family residential area, they're all R-110 lots right there. And street view, this is what we're looking at, so pretty standard, with for Payson. Current plat, they're all in plat A, and the applicant in lot, what is that lot? Oh, lot ten, well, lot ten and eleven would like to change the boundary line just by a few feet to accommodate in addition that wouldn't meet setback requirements if property lines weren't changed. And in order to do that, because it is planted, we would need to either amend the entire subdivision or vacate these two outdoor subdivisions and create a new plat, plat B, which is what they've opted to do, as well as then vacate the public utility easements and establish new public utility easements. And so the proposed plat, plat B, looks simply like this, so it would still fall under the Green Ridge Landing Development Agreement and the other regulations for Green Ridge Landing, plat A, and you can see here, it'd be lot one and two, the boundary line is modified, it steps to the south, it jogs to the south after the front setback is met, so it goes back, I believe it's twenty feet here, and then it jogs over a few feet, and goes back for ways to accommodate the setback with the hoped-for addition. And so that is it, very simple. Recommendation here would be to approve the vacation of lots ten and eleven, along with their public utility easements from Green Ridge Landing, plat A, then to grant preliminary and final approval, as well as the establishment of the new public utility easements for Green Ridge Landing, plat B, so if you have any questions about that. Went through that really quick, but it's also very simple, so. Went through that really quick, but it's also very simple, so.
Any discussion by the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, so the motion carries, public hearing is open. If you'd like to speak about this subject, step in line, can state your name and address and speak clearly. Again, time limit's three minutes, unless if you can, and agree or disagree with previous comments, don't be the same, just state new information. So, public hearing is open. Not seeing anybody wanting to take advantage of it, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the motion carries. Okay, I don't see another motion that we need to make.
You gotta make the motion to vote on it, yeah.
Oh, motion, okay, that's right. Okay, so any council discussion on the subject? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we vacate lots 10 and 11 and the public utility easements. And...
Creating plat B.
Creating Green Ridge, plat B, with the preliminary and final plat approval, and the moving of the utility easement.
One second, Beth.
Got a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to number two, resolution, development agreement for Spring Creek Town Homes located on the southwest corner of the intersection of 1130 South and 1700 West and the south Meadows Planning Area. That's you up, Mark?
This is the development agreement, and as soon as the project's been ongoing, the Spring Creek is across the freeway, 800 South, and then you turn south towards the existing development, and this is kitty corner across, this is a reference to the location there. It's something that the council was seeing preliminary and final plat on it, we put together the development agreement, there was some delay because the original developer has now sold that across to those who will actually put it in. The only changes that have, that that transition took place was, they had to bring to the table their own design of homes, because of copyright issues like that. And so they're, they're pretty close to the same product that has been presented here. This just memorializes those details, and we present it for council approval.
Okay, any council discussion?
Got a question on that. So, it seems like the one we looked at, the RV parking, and the one I saw just recently did not, and I'm fine with that, but has something changed in this?
It came to us only...
So I assume you present, have the RV parked and they hand cards.
Okay, so it must have been...
And, yeah, that's correct, because I did refer back, in putting together the development agreement, I referred back to the council minutes specifically on that. And something that also went back and forth were the, was the clubhouse, and the clubhouse is back in, there's a, an exhibit that was in the attached materials, and in the center, it shows the whole project, but in the center it shows the open space and the clubhouse is in there, along with other amenities, I think, or the...
Sport or...
Exactly, they're all registered there.
Story thinks the same except they had to...
That's correct. The...
Did the developers, they had...
I couldn't tell much difference, but, and they actually said that they were going to put some, some gags, just some architectural design difference to, to make some differences there, but nothing that, one was that they had asked for something that we did not allow was a wood product, and we let them know, and so that did not change, even though it was asked, and they said that was fine. Let's see, is there a representative here from...
Yeah, we're all...
Anything that you want to add?
No, I think you've got pretty much covered, I mean, it, just as far as the RV parking, that was part of the, taking that out and putting the clubhouse there.
Other questions?
Okay, any further discussion?
Who is the developer?
It is Keystone Construction.
Okay, we're ready for a motion? I have a feel, Mark. There we go. Okay, I think so. I'll entertain a motion, and make the motion that we pass resolution 2018-15, the resolution authorizing for the mayor to enter into a development agreement on behalf of Payson City between the developer and Spring Creek Town Homes subdivision.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have the motion, it's been seconded, we'll start with a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Christensen.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to number three, resolution, development agreement for villages at Arrowhead Park, located west of Arrowhead Trail at approximately 1500 north.
That's correct, and that, this is a development that has also been referred to City Council on numerous occasions. Last I recall, they did 12 iterations of designs and things like that, not all of those came from City Council, but staffs saw several different iterations of designs and that, were in the process of moving that forward, it's been approved, plats, final and preliminary plats. This is in an area where it's beyond the development of the current city, so it goes out past church property and other undeveloped property, and so it's kind of an island of development, it's all within the city. They're extending utilities out to the project, this will, after, after this item, we'll be discussing an interlocal agreement with, regarding Payson and Salem participating in a sewer treatment plant. This project would be impacted at such time that that sewer plant is, is developed, so it's out in that area where the gravity flow is, would best move towards that. We have in the agreement interim project plan, if you will, for how they handle sewage through pumping and that, and so it's intended that if, for some reason, Salem's project doesn't go forward, then they would, it would turn into a permanent pumping back into Payson, but all aspects of that flow to Salem's new sewer project is on track and in that direction. They've initiated laying in water lines out to their project, initiated aluminum round and things like that, and so, they're, they're underway. Questions?
Okay, any further discussions among the council? Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion and we pass the resolution, whatever number it is. So I have in front of me, development agreement for villages at Arrowhead Park, located west of Arrowhead Trail, approximately 1500 north.
There's been a motion, it's been seconded, we'll go for a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Going on to number four, resolution, which has already been mentioned, interlocal agreement with Salem City regarding wastewater services.
Okay. Mayor, council, we met with Salem City, this interlocal would allow the Arrowhead Development to just adopt that development agreement, the DAE annexation that's looking, has been annexed, and another area, there's an exhibit, I think it was sent to you a little bit late in the packet, because they were still finishing that up, but those areas that can gravity flow to Salem, they have the capacity, they allow us to have our customers or our residents flow to that. For the long run, it would be a good thing, save some pumping costs, pump it back into ours, so, we discussed that with Salem, and this was a proposed interlocal agreement, they would charge us based on the flow and the, the comes, we'd meter it, and then we would, we would collect the impact fee on their sewer, impact fee instead of ours, because it's going to their plant, so, that's the basis of the interlocal agreement, they have it on their agenda tonight as well, for their council to consider, and we're just trying to move this forward, so. Someone have any questions?
What's the rate compared to ours?
It's higher, it's gonna be higher, especially with their new...
So that, that community pays a little bit more, or does that just distribute it in us?
I think we'd probably have to charge more for the area that's served, so it's not put on the other residents.
I know at the Sumo meeting, they said they're currently at $35 for a resident, and it will go up to $56.
It's gonna be about $54, $56 dollars, and Salem, and they get their plant then.
Isn't that what they said, Mark?
But they are only charging us just from the treatment, not the collection, so...
So they're not charging us that full $54?
I have a couple of questions. One is, I didn't see a map of the area that we're looking at doing, but there could be a pretty big area that would flow to Salem that won't flow to us, so how big area, I mean, they might be in, not being a third of our sewer?
It's only this area that they've allowed, and in your packet, if you go back to the council packet, it's in there now, do you like that? I can show you... I'll take that to the network, so I pulled it up on the network.
So it's just these two areas?
Yeah, here's the two developments, the villages at Arrowhead, and then here's the new annexation, and this is my annexation, so those three areas.
What about when all these people come in, because they're gonna flow, and they're gonna have to go and differ either a regional sewer, a water station, or another option that we have to engineer?
When that happens, we'll take their sewer back to that time, right? Or how far out is it?
We just have to, when that develops, we have to decide that, I mean, Salem will allow us to sewer this area into their plant, that's all that they've agreed to at this point.
Okay, so this is, it's long-term, or it's considered, what I consider permanent, once that their plant is built, then the per, what's temporary is what's going in right now, and it's going in at the developer's own cost to, a bulk rental pump station, which is a private pump station, and pump it back to Payson, and in such time as they build, then it will turn permanent flow that way.
Well, at some point in time, we're gonna have to have a big, big left station to come over.
There all have to be other stations for the other side of the freeway, other things that's hard, that we have to engineer. Any other questions?
No, I just like that, now I'm gonna charge them more, but they're increasing the cost by choosing to move out there, so the additional cost should be carried by that neighborhood, not the entire city.
Well, I do have another question. What about the impact fees and all that, are they gonna all go to Salem on the impact fees for the sewer?
Yeah, just, and that's just, it's just for the collection, for the, on their impact fee?
My understanding was that it was divided, the impact fee for the plant, and then our collection, because we would be collecting it and distributing it, or giving it to them right after the plant, as you...
So it would be responsible to service the lines up to Salem City's plant?
Yes, anything within, within our city boundaries, we would be responsible for, so main business, all of that.
Well, is there... And I think the portion of their impact fee is just for the collection, just for the plant part, not for their, I mean, for their plant, not for the collection of, throughout their city. So there'd be, there'd be their impact fee, and then we'd have a small impact fee for our collect, for our distribution, so we'd get a little bit from that, but, yeah, we'd collect it for Salem.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna bear a little bit, so... Well, I guess one thing I look at, and I'm, I'm okay with this, because we want to make this work, but we're losing out a lot of impact fees to build our, or upgrade our plant from, you know, because there's going to Salem for their plant, so, just a concern as we go forward, that it's taking money from upgrading our plant, so...
No, I don't know how far into the plans they are, but, I mean, is there a possibility of getting sewer lines ran underneath the Nebo Parkway when it goes over the freeway to make it possible to get the sewer out the right direction that way, or is it stopped to go out and around the way?
The Nebo, I don't know, the Nebo Parkway?
The Nebo Beltway, whatever, isn't it, what's that really called? The new one that's not in there yet. The new exchange, the new off-ramp?
Oh, the, the new interchange.
Yeah.
Yeah, we look at that when it comes in, so...
That's, that's not even on, on the, that takes blocks, I mean, that might take...
Right.
It would apply to this area that we're proposing to go into Salem, so it would, sort of that area, but yeah, we, yeah, we need to, as that interchange would develop, we have to make sure the utilities get through there.
Well, I know that getting under the freeway's a challenge, but when you've got something like that, I didn't know if that makes it more possible to get under there.
No, good point.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, then ready for a motion.
I move that we accept the interlocal agreement with Salem City regarding water services for the...
Village of Arrowhead Park?
Well, it's more than just Arrowhead Park.
The area described, I think, the other day.
On seconded, Beth.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, we'll start with a roll call vote with Councilwoman, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion passes. Move on to adjourn to REIT's Development Agency, I need a motion for that to happen.
I'll make a motion, where you adjourn to RDA.
Seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
For you, Perry. Thank you, gentlemen, for being there.
Mayor, council, this is on the agenda for approval, if the council sees fit to do that. We have a real estate purchase contract proposal to, for us to sell, it would be, there's a lot three? I'm in the wrong thing, lot three, plat H. Yeah, we did have that under contract previously, and, what's that? We had it with, I'll have to look it up, it's, it was, there were two names. Oh, it escapes me right now, Gleve and Patton?
What were they putting there?
What's that?
What were they putting there?
They were going to do a, I think, a spec building.
Ten at lease.
Ten at lease.
And they pulled out because of the pipeline?
They gave us a full offer of what we've been asking for, but they, they were concerned about the Highline ditch that goes through a portion of the property, and so they chose to back out. This, this offer is the same, it's a full offer for what we've been asking, but it's contingent upon the city moving that pipeline, or that ditch. We've, we've talked to Highline Canal, they're willing to move it when the irrigation season's over, how they're gonna use the same pipe, they'll move it over, we're still waiting to get a bid, they didn't think it was gonna be that expensive, and we have to buy the additional pipe to connect it back together. I think it's a fair, fair assessment, I mean, we had a contingency on the other property we sold out there to move that dirt, and to get it ready, so, so that's the proposal, if the council is okay with that, then we recommend a resolution to approve this real estate purchase contract that's written, and if the mayor have it all signed in... estate purchase contract that was written, and if the mayor have it all signed and initial, and then get it back to him.
Do you have estimates on how much it's going to cost to move it?
Well, Travis had between ten and fifteen thousand, but it seemed like, depending on the pipe's cost, the, the Highline's gonna move it with Jay Stady and their contractor, and he, I thought it was a little bit lower than that, but it won't be, it won't be more than fifteen thousand, might be, might be closer to five, but five and ten. We still need to, we still need to get the exact design there, but when we met outside with, with Highline, it didn't seem like it was gonna be that big of an issue to get it done.
We got the same price.
What's that?
We got the same price.
The same...
Same price.
Yeah. Yeah, we had the same, same per foot cost as the other, the other proposal.
And this is just a warehouse, it's not a...
It's an office warehouse.
Office warehouse, they're not selling anything out of there.
They might, lighting, something could, and the nice thing is it's locally owned, it'll be owned and not leased and stuff like that. I do have a disclaimer, I do have a professional working relationship with the purchaser.
And so it's with Galaxy Lighting, and...
So is there anybody that buys or sells anything in Payson that doesn't go through Central Bank? I think you made that the last number.
I think you do some pretty good business.
That's good, good for you. Yeah, we, as directors.
I move that we approve the sale of properties in the Payson Business Park, plat H, lot three, to...
Galaxy Lighting?
Galaxy Lighting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, go to F, adjournment of redevelopment agency.
Do we go RDA?
Okay, is that second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, move on to G, adjourn to a closed session, I'll entertain a motion for that. Second, I'll have a second, this calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, adjourn to this closed session.